Alright, so we'll, uh, we'll open the meeting. This is a regular meeting of the Fairhaven Planning Board. Adequate notice that this meeting has been given pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. At the time, the board reorganization in January of this year, the board adopted its regular meeting schedule for the year. Notice of the schedule was sent to and published in the Asbury Park Press on January thirty first, twenty twenty five, and the Two River Times on January twenty third, twenty twenty five. That notice was also posted on the bulletin board in Borough Hall and has remained continuously posted there as required by the statute. A copy of the notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Borough Clerk. A copy of the notice has also been sent to members of the public as have requested such information in accordance with the statute. Adequate notice having been given, the board secretary is directed to include this statement in the minutes of this meeting. We'll, uh, we'll move to, uh, to roll call.
Here. Mr. Olson. Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Pedaloff.
Here.
Mr. Roll.
Here.
Mr. Nickah.
Here.
Chrisson.
Here.
Mr. Dansonman. Mr. Bailey.
Here. Okay, so, um, we all rise for a seat.
Bred allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, uh, welcome to our meeting. Um, we'll start real quick with the administrative items and, uh, and get those out of the way. The first is the approval of the February eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular meeting minutes. Uh, those were distributed, uh, to the board, um, you know, in advance of the meeting. I didn't have any comments. I wanted to make sure nobody else on the board had any comments. Motion approved.
Sorry, can I?
But, yes. Uh, Mr. Newell.
Yes.
Mr. Nickah.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Nickah.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes. Okay, we also have the, the February eighteenth, twenty twenty five executive session minutes. Again, those were distributed ahead of the meeting. I didn't have any comments. I didn't know if anybody else did. Motion approved.
Sir.
Uh, Mr. Bush, yes. Mr. Newell.
Yes.
Mr. Pedaloff.
Yes.
Mr. Roll.
Yes.
Mr. Nickah.
Yes.
Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
And Mr. Bailey.
Yes. Okay, so, um, we'll move to, to new business now. Um, so we're gonna hear today, uh, planning board twenty four dash oh two Sandy Hook Seafood, six fifteen and six nineteen River Road, block twenty five, lot ten point oh one and eleven in zone B dash one. Uh, and so before we start, um, before we start the, um, the hearing, uh, there is a, um, uh, an attachment to the, um, to the materials that were distributed, uh, or, or, I'm sorry, that was distributed late. And so it was not in the email. Um, there are three companies listed on the, uh, appendix or on the additional page. And so, um, we just wanna make sure that obviously nobody on the board has any ownership interests or other conflicts with those, with those entities before we get started.
The, uh, the asking goal HDI only visiting owners of property. The applicant this evening is Sandy Hook Seafood LLC. You have those individuals that have interest in that company. Just wanted to make sure since we didn't have that preliminarily, that you don't have to conflict with that. If there are any conflicts, then fine, we can just put that down.
No, so I, I think, uh, before we get started, um, we'll, we'll again, we'll have, uh, Mr. Kovats just summarize real briefly what, what, what we are, uh, what we are hearing here today and what the board's role is in, uh, in this application.
Sure. Just before we get that, Mr. Olson, we have jurisdiction in this matter?
Yes.
Okay. Um, this is a site plan application. I think there are some sign variances, and I think there is one technical variance. It's just me, get back in. Um, there's one technical variance to the extent on the, uh, lot coverage where, uh, it's a technical variance to the extent that they are seeking ninety eight percent where eighty percent should not be exceeded, but that's actually an improvement of the existing condition, which at that point on that lot, that's one hundred percent. So this is basically a site plan to reconfigure portions of lot one zero point oh one, and that's six nineteen River Road to establish a seafood retail market with eight seats for indoor dining. Plan proposes to retain three existing commercial tenants on the site, uh, the pool company, uh, office and storage within that company, and the hardware store, and I guess the convenience store on that lot. Basically, there were pre-existing, uh, variances, existing conditions. The applicant is entitled to, in a sense, enjoy the benefit of that with the understanding that previously those variances were granted, and the applicant established experience with the part of those. There are also some waivers that the applicant is seeking. Um, some are to check those waivers, some might leave our design waivers. I'll let, uh, our engineer address those and those that he recommended to you. Um, as to the variance, there's still a technical variance, as I said before. It's either the C one or the C two criteria, depending on what the applicant wants to, um, present to the board. C one, as we've discussed before, and as is referenced in the planner's report, uh, C one is the classic, you know, is the hardship variance. Uh, in that scenario, the applicant has to demonstrate that the strict application of the regulation would result in particular an exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional undue hardship um, due to one of the following. That's either topographic conditions, physical features, uh, uniquely affecting our property, or buildings already existing on the site. And by reason of an extraordinary and exceptional situation uniquely affecting this property, um, law allows the structures to exist and the act, again, can demonstrate that the hardship is there. Positive criteria on the C two, this was known as the flexi, we'll see, this is the applicant must demonstrate that there is a benefit, a public benefit drawn from deviations, and that such deviations would not really advance the purposes of the owner. In other words, that there is a beneficial use to the, uh, to the surrounding property. It's not really the advancement of the owner's interest. In both instances, the negative criteria must be established that the applicant satisfies the positive. Once they've satisfied the positive criteria, must also demonstrate that the granting of the variance can be accomplished without resulting in substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of his own ordinance and his own plan. That's substantial detriment because already every variance is technically a detriment to the, to these own clean, these own regulations. Uh, that's your application this evening and your commission. I can just simply mark exhibits, okay?
That's fine.
Yeah, I just wanna put my appearance in in case you have any questions. Jennifer Crimco for Law from Advance Over Manner here on behalf of the applicant. Um, I had a little bit to add to your opening that you just shared. Shall I wait until after you mark the exhibits?
My opening, you get to do your. Okay.
Well, you did such a good job that, uh, you know, I just had a little bit to add.
Um, if I could just first bring up all of your witnesses and our witnesses, all of them, anybody that's gonna testify, think they're gonna testify, have something to say so that you're not left shouting in the back of the audience. I could just ask everybody to swear up, stand up, it's gonna be sworn. Rich, also you two. I swear you into. So swear the testimonies, swear or affirm the testimony you give before the board to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I did.
Yes.
Yes, I do, I do, I do.
My general, my general counsel to you two, good, um, everybody can sit down now. My general counsel is once your call is before you start testifying, state your name for the record, spell your last name, provide a business or, or home address, whatever address. That way the record can identify you should it ever become necessary. That way the transcribe record will know who's, who's speaking at that. With your permission, uh, Mr. Crimco, I'd like to mark as A one, the copies of the planning board application, inclusive of the listed variances, notice, uh, for the hearing, um, tax collector certification, um, and also the completed land use application checklist. So we're gonna, using your letter items one and skipping over item two, item three, and all markers on the one. A two will be a copy of the zoning officer's denial letter of March thirteen, twenty twenty four. A three will be fifteen copies of the topographic plan prepared by, uh, Thomas Santre Jr., uh, dated January seventeen, twenty twenty four. A four will be fifteen, will be the, will be the minor site plans prepared by Kennedy Consulting LLC revised to a date of, I think this is the latest date of March eleven, twenty twenty four. I think that's the latest.
Yeah, so if that's what was in my letter, uh, then yes, that was the last one. Um, actually, it's December fifth, twenty twenty four. Is that what you indicated?
No, I think you had an updated one, March eleven. This is, these are the minor site plans.
This is the, this is the updated one. So the, the latest submission that came in, I believe, was through Kennedy's office, a letter December sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Are you reading from a more recent letter?
No, I'm referring to the plans themselves.
No, understood. And, but my letter that you're reading from, what's the date on that?
March eleven, twenty twenty four. March eleven, twenty twenty four, uh, his plan. Your dated letter is April nine, twenty twenty four.
Yeah, no, so that is not the most recent one.
Okay.
There's, uh, the revised plans are revised through December fifth, twenty twenty four. And I can certainly hand you a copy of this. This is, no?
Absolutely, of course. I believe what you say.
Okay. No, I'm saying so you could read from it. Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm working off of your April nine, twenty twenty four letter.
Right, and we need a resubmission after that in December.
My A five will be the floor plans. I have a revised date to November twenty two, twenty twenty four.
That's correct.
I have the, uh, photos, what I refer to as images of the property. I think there are two images. Different conditions in and about the neighborhood. I don't believe they will, when you mark the dates. I have them marked as A six. A seven are copies of the Fairhaven Planning Board Resolution, granted minor site plan, approval together with variances and approval of sign application, which will memorialize January five, two thousand. I also have A eight, the Monmouth County Development Review Memo of April eight, twenty twenty four. I've also marked, uh, as PB one, the February twelve, twenty twenty five completeness review of the signature of Mr. Gardella. Uh, and we'll also have PB two, March ten, twenty twenty five, uh, plans report over the signature of Don Miller, present here, and also PB three, the, uh, March eighteen, twenty twenty five, this year, report of the signature of Mr. Gardella that you received today. Are there any other exhibits that you can bring?
There, there are, and I just wanna clarify, the two photos you were talking about, is this it?
Yes.
Okay, so these are the site plans in this December fifth, twenty twenty four, and Andy, we have some, uh, exhibits to hand out. And I'll give you this, and then I'll explain what it is, and I'll give you a little bit more background. This is a site plan rendering dated today.
We're up to A nine.
Right. And it is a color rendered overlay over a, on aerial exhibit, but it also incorporates some changes that we made in response to Rich's letter he got today, which we'll go over. Could you just, uh, remind me what A five was?
A five is the floor plans prepared by, uh, existing at the place conditions of November twenty two, twenty twenty four. So this is A nine. Anything else?
That's all.
You want me to get out of your way?
Thank you. And Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this board is relatively familiar with the site. It's two lots, uh, that are adjacent to each other and operate as a single site. It's lot ten point oh one, which has a Crowzers on it, which you're familiar with, and lot eleven, which has a multi-tenant building that, uh, has a pool company as well as a hardware storage in there. And when the applicants, prior applicants, I was not involved, came before this board, there was a condition that any future, uh, that the deed restriction needed to be recorded against the property, that any change of use would require return to the planning board. I've learned that the deed restriction had not yet been, um, recorded. So obviously, as a condition of this approval, uh, we've worked with the owner now, and he's in agreement that we will record that. Additionally, and interestingly, that what I discovered as I came here, the two entities that own these properties are interrelated. So there wasn't really a need to have cross-access easements between the two, but obviously, for the board's purposes and to ensure that in the future this will always operate as a single site and that there will not be any problems, we've offered as part of our application to impose cross-access and parking easement agreements between the two properties. So if one of them are ever sold, you have some control over that. That, uh, document would be submitted to Mr. Kovats for his review and approval to make sure that everything that the board would be concerned with, uh, would be protected. So that in and of itself is a great benefit, uh, to the borough that doesn't exist today. Uh, but that's just for starters. We had the, uh, opportunity, and Mr. Chair, you were there, to meet in a technical review meeting, uh, with the board's professionals, uh, and we heard a lot of the concerns, and then we further got the review letters, and, and as you're gonna hear through the testimony, uh, we can pretty much comply with everything in Rich's letter, uh, save for a few items, which I've discussed with Rich in advance of this. Uh, and our exhibit shows some of those proposals. By way of just very quick background, what we're proposing to do is to relocate the pool company towards the rear of the property, and we can assign next to it and have the twenty-three hundred square feet in the front be the Sandy Hook Seafood Market. I'm gonna hear one of the partners who owns it, uh, offer some background with regard to that. There was, uh, it, it indicated there were seats for dining, but it's not a restaurant, and we're going to demonstrate that to you today, which is why we use the retail parking. We do not need a variance for parking, uh, using the retail and using the, uh, calculations that Rich had us for thighs. So I know that that was a mouthful to get started, but I just wanted you to know that we've heard all of the comments and concerns and the professionals, as well as the technical review, we're prepared to address all of them at tonight's meeting.
Terrific.
Great. So I'd like to first call Mr. Ballerman.
Oh, right.
He was sworn, but you have a seat.
Uh, Luke Ballerman, two zero nine, Queen's Drive South, I live in Little Silver. Um, and I will give you a little background about the application. Um, last name is Ballerman, B O L L E R M A N, and it's two zero nine, Queen's Drive South in Little Silver. I'd like to first start by thanking you all very, very much, um, as the chair, the officials of Fairhaven, uh, Mr. Gardella, and the rest of the folks here tonight supporting this application. Uh, we're very, very pleased to be able to bring Sandy Hook Seafood, the concept of Sandy Hook Seafood, to Fairhaven. Uh, we hope to make an impact to the local community by providing fresh locally sourced seafood with the introduction of Sandy Hook Seafood, uh, a chef-inspired market. Uh, my name is Luke Ballerman. I'm a local real estate developer and entrepreneur. I live in Little Silver. I also owned and developed Sandy Hook Bay Marina and One Willow and Highlands. Uh, I am representing Sandy Hook Seafood on behalf of my, uh, my partner, Kyle Hopps, Spensburger, who's here. Um, he is the founder and owner of Second Jetty and Seabright. Uh, over many, many years, uh, One Willow and Second Jetty have collaborated uh, to bring the finest seafood offerings in Monmouth County, something we're quite proud of. Um, the next evolution of our partnership, uh, was to open a small seafood market, uh, that could serve our customers outside of the restaurant. Um, our chefs, who are going to be in the store regularly, hope to inspire people to be healthy, fresh seafood with a specific focus on the local fishery. Uh, we have partnerships with the famed Fulton Fish Market. We work very, very closely with local fishermen and purveyors, uh, to source and offer the highest quality products in the sphere. Uh, we regularly buy, um, bluefin tuna, um, and there's nothing that compares to the type of freshness that we hope to offer of our clients. Uh, we take great pride in what we do. Um, certainly, so sourcing local bluefin tuna is, uh, is a treasure. It's a local treasure. It's something that's very, very special to New Jersey, and we take great pride in it. Um, and quite frankly, we, we, as, as customers, also have been quite disappointed with the, uh, seafood quality of local stores. Uh, there's a lot of farm raised, imported, and quite frankly, junk on the shelves. Um, and this was the impetus for us to start a chef-inspired market, where customers can come into the store and comfortably purchase seafood and work with chefs in the store to craft quality meals for their families. We've been evaluating locations for quite some time, and we feel that downtown Fairhaven is the perfect location for both proximity to our customers and also the local food traffic. Uh, the store will offer things like, uh, local bluefin tuna, salmon, halibut, caviar, oysters, lobsters, shrimps, platters, and catering. Uh, we also will, uh, of course, highlight New Jersey clams out of Sandy Hook Bay, which are, uh, which are local specialty. And, uh, we also have some other great products, culinary products that our chefs have developed, uh, things like steam pots, um, and some other wonderful things. We also offer tools of the trades in the store. So when you walk into the store, we plan to offer things like pots, pans, spices, produce, uh, and offer techniques from the chefs, One Willow and Second Jetty. It's not just a fish market, it's a chef-inspired market, which will give people the confidence to come in, order the products that they want, and create wonderful, uh, wonderful meals for their families. So you may notice the application has some seating inside of the store, and we'd like to clarify that this is not a restaurant. There's no sit-down, full-service dining. We can see One Willow and Second Jetty for that. The purpose is to offer convenience seating for grab-and-go customers, for people wanting to be served, and for any of our customers who require seating. This will be a true market, very similar to assembling a pasta shop right down the road. We anticipate having a maximum of two to four employees at the store at any given time during normal business hours of ten AM to six PM. There will likely be two people in the staff at any given time, a store manager and a chef. And we anticipate very early morning deliveries between five and seven o'clock in the morning to receive most of our goods, uh, for seafood and produce. And most of the vehicles for those kinds of deliveries are not large trucks. They're smaller passenger vans, small box trucks, and cargo bins. Uh, we mostly utilize smaller purveyors, um, in order to support the local PK system of Monmouth County, um, other farms and other, uh, local purveyors. Uh, you'll hear testimony from our crack professional team, and we're here to answer any questions you might have about the application. Again, thank you so much for your time in considering this application, and we look forward to being a part of Fairhaven.
Thank you.
We've got any questions for, uh, Mr. Ballerman? Recognizing that the engineer is gonna go through where the deliveries are going to take place and all of the technical details.
What was the timeline? What was the timeline again? Produce the seafood delivered at five or seven AM, and then store open ten to six?
That's right. That's right. Yes, sir. And sometimes they'll come earlier.
Do we, do we know what the, uh, the, the trucks or the vans for the pool company?
We do.
When they come in and?
We do. We're gonna be able to offer that testimony through our engineer.
Great.
And, and just so the board chair knows as a preview, because he was on the call, there was been some concerns about the trucks all over the property. As you're gonna see on the exhibit, we're now gonna have a dedicated loading area for those trucks. So we're going to ensure that the site can operate multi-tenanted, because everyone's gonna have their own spot.
Rich, do you wanna get started with your, uh?
They, they may have additional presentation.
Yeah, it's not, it, it wouldn't be for, it wouldn't be for this guy. He's only here for his looks. The engineer will give all the technical details, and we hope to hit everything in Rich's letter in the process.
No more questions for me.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next one up in the hot seat.
Can I set up this, uh, full-size board somewhere in the middle?
Sure, you may want to also make sure whoever, that anybody can see.
Wherever, wherever is best. This, the side here.
Yeah.
So everyone can see.
Well, I just want the public to have a seat. Did we?
I mean, we all have, we all have a small size.
Did you hand out the small size to the public, I mean?
I'm setting this up correct.
Yeah, the same. Why don't you set that up?
It sounds exactly like that.
And just so the public knows, we'll put it up here. It's just exactly. Okay, so Andy, you were sworn at the beginning. Why don't you state your name and your qualifications, and we'll, uh, take a moment to offer your background to the board?
Certainly. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Andrew Varcomey, C O M I, with Kennedy Consulting Engineers, two eleven Maple Avenue, Red Bank, New Jersey. Uh, I am a graduate of Rutgers University in the field of civil engineering. I have twenty years' experience in, uh, land development engineering projects, and I am a licensed New Jersey professional engineer.
We submit him as an expert. Okay, so Andy, why don't we start with, um, what's existing on the site? Go into what we're proposing, and then we'll hit all the changes that we're making to address the concerns from the technical review as well as Rich's letter.
That certainly. Uh, so utilizing the, the exhibit that I handed out, uh, which is entitled Site Plan Rendering Prepared by Kennedy Consulting Engineers, March, March eighteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, the project site was highlighted in red, consists of two lots totaling zero point six two nine acres and lies in the B one zoning district. Uh, the smaller lot to the west is lot eleven of block twenty five, also known as six fifteen River Road. You'll hear me said, refer to six fifteen, the, the building, six fifteen building and the six nineteen building. Uh, that, that property, lot eleven, is zero point two two acres, has a forty-five hundred square foot, single-story commercial building, thirty-seven hundred square feet of which is, is for the Two Ri, Two River Pool Company, and eight hundred square feet at the rear of the, uh, the building is, is leased to the Fairhaven Har, Hardware Store or, uh, store warehouse. Uh, the larger lot, uh, to, to the east, which is lot ten point zero one of block twenty five, also known as six nineteen, uh, River Road, is zero point four zero eight acres and has a two, twenty-two hundred square foot, uh, convenience store. Uh, the, the project site surrounded by River Road to the south, um, commercial properties to the east and west, and residential properties, uh, to the northwest on, on Navasink Avenue. Uh, the site's access from River Road, the curb cut is, uh, very large, approximately fifty-seven, uh, feet in width, and a shared, uh, driveway exists between the two buildings. Uh, there are some striped parking spaces in front of the convenience store and some at the rear of the six fifteen uh, building, seventeen existing, uh, striped spaces in total. However, the majority of the paved areas on-site and behind the convenience store are unstriped, and that's a big part of what, what we're proposing. Uh, I'll move on to the proposed, uh, conditions.
And I would just ask the board, I know we don't have it up on the board, but A five is the floor plan that we moved in showing existing and proposed. As he's talking about the building, I think it might be helpful to just look at it.
That's where I'm referring to the, the different tenant spaces. So for the six fifteen River Road building, now, now we look on that, that, uh, floor plan exhibit, the proposed condition, the forty-five hundred square foot, uh, building, we're dividing into three tenant spaces. The front of the building would be twenty-three hundred square feet, and that would be for the Sandy Hook uh, seafood market. The middle portion of the building will be for, for the Two River Pool Company, that's fourteen hundred square feet, and eight hundred square feet of storage space at the rear of the building would, would remain.
For the hardware.
Correct.
Okay.
And with respect to parking, uh, the existing, uh, drive aisles and parking areas will, will be restriped uh, to create designated parking spaces, twenty-five in total, uh, between the two buildings, between the two lots.
And importantly, right now, I know you had said it, but there's only striping in front of the Crowzers really, and some, uh, next to the Pool Company building where we're going in. Otherwise, it's a free-for-all, particularly behind the Crowzers.
Essentially, yes. And, 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 and many of the spaces behind the six fifteen building are tandem spaces, so, which we're attempting to eliminate.
Okay, so what we're doing is we're creating safe circulation to find aisle widths and, uh, accessways between as well as the parking spaces.
You said it very, very well. Um, so, so the, of the twenty-five total spaces, that includes the restriping of the existing, uh, five spaces in front of the convenience store, eight spaces on lot eleven for the six fifteen River Road building, uh, are proposed, two, two of which are designated for employees. You see, those are, those are striped, employees only. Uh, and an additional, uh, twelve spaces behind the convenience store are also proposed. Uh, the parking requirement for all, uh, four uses on the site is, is twenty-four, so we need that parking requirement for the site in total. Okay, uh, plus, uh, one, uh, plus one additional. I'll also note the, the creation of a dedicated, uh, barrier-free, uh, parking space on lot eleven, with, with striped access to the front entrance of that building, six fifteen River Road is also proposed where, where one doesn't exist, uh, today. Uh, with respect to entrance improvements, I mentioned that the, uh, the site is, currently has a fifty-seven foot wide, uh, curb cut. Both Monmouth County and, and Mr. Gardella, both, both. Both Moms County and, and Mr. Gardella both, both uh requested that that entrance be uh narrowed for, for safety and and currently cars enter the site have to contend with convenience store cars backing out of the parking spaces, that creates a very accident si- prone situation, so to, to, to remedy that situation, we're proposing to narrow the uh existing driveway width to thirty feet from fifty-seven feet by extending the uh island in front of the convenience store. So we'll, we'll do that both with curbing, pavers and possibly some, some additional landscaping as, as uh what we'll get to. With respect to uh loading, the pool company, I'll go through each of the businesses ju- uh just, just briefly, I know we touched on the seafood market uh deliveries, but as far as the pool company, uh that currently receives deliveries three times a week in the afternoon. Uh, deliveries are made with, with trucks no larger than a thirty foot uh box truck, that's the first first of two uh small changes on this rendering versus the submitted plan. Uh, we, we show one. Yeah, we show a twelve foot by thirty-two foot loading space in the uh northeast corner of, of the property behind uh the convenience store. And that would be for, for loading trucks.
And that would be for larger trucks, obviously a smaller truck, if the space is open, they could pull into the space.
So those are the deliveries for the cool company?
Correct.
What about the, like, does the, the cool company get vans of their employees to come in, pick stuff up and then go out to different jobs? When does that happen?
So there's pickup trucks that they have and uh a lot of them uh or but some are kept at home, some are kept on site and they would drive in, pick up their truck, load up and, and head out.
And when does that happen normally, generally?
We, from eight to nine AM.
From eight.
We identify that person?
No, I'll, I'll offer it, from eight to nine AM. I can certainly move them in after. You want me to do it now?
I'd just like this, well, if he's hollering, Andrew, that you're taking, I'd like this one in.
I, I didn't know he was testifying.
Uh, that's, that's okay, that's fine, we'll take her. Your name?
Guy Henderson.
Mr. Henderson, if you saw me swear the testimony, give me the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, can you spell your last name for the record?
Henderson, H E N D E R S O N.
Okay.
Mr. Anderson, you're the owner of the pool company?
Yes.
And you're also the owner's uh stepson?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a family affair we have there. Uh, when, when your guys come to load up, what time do they load up?
Uh, we're in by eight every morning, um and usually we're out at the latest by nine AM.
Okay.
So it wouldn't interfere with the operations of the fish market?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, uh moving on to, so we talked about the loading space, uh the seafood market.
Well, I want, I want to just come another change that you didn't show here, but Rick had Rich had noted, had noted that you have a master plan section with regard to transportation and it's a recommendation, it's not a requirement. And we looked at it and this is a county road. So uh, we can't do anything without going to the county, but there were some things that I talked to Rich, Rich about before the uh hearing which we can do, and one of them is in this area where we're widening the um the island, we can add landscaping, the buffer landscaping is suggested by a master plan. So I just, I want, that was one of the changes that we had in. And, and Rich had offered that, I'm sorry, your master plan suggests that we also add a little landscape island here. But that's our um pedestrian access, so we can do that.
And, and just to clarify, these are recommendations based off the active transportation plan, the twenty-seventh year.
So, so while they're not on here, what we are offering to do is, is the buffering in the front and then the uh high visibility striping if the county allows us.
The county allows, and you can give us dimensions of that, that point in time?
Yes.
And?
We would, we would pursue it to this plan, it's, it's all spelled out exactly what it should be, so yes, we would.
So as a condition?
Absolutely, if the board approves us, so I just, I didn't want to move on uh until we just said it's not on the plan, but we've agreed to do that.
Uh, one question uh for Mr. Henderson, what, what is the um, the end of day schedule for you as compared to the fish markets uh operating hours?
Yeah, that's a good question. I normally uh over days end up working at
Four P M.
Um, so normally guys bring back their trucks, they clock out and, and then the road and get out.
You'll be available to discuss other operations if they do that, so.
Yep.
Now, just ask one question about the entry way. Uh, was there any examination done, and this may be impractical of the driveway being at the other end of the property, of the side of the property, and only ask that because as the traffic diverters there, um it creates almost a four-way intersection with Cedar Ave. And I'm not, I don't want to, you know, dig into the impossible, but I, I guess, has this been considered?
The county wouldn't allow it because the driveway setback to the property line wouldn't conform. We, we've already, I think that, that Doug moved it and we've already been to the county.
Yeah.
And they really are the ones that look at that issue and while they had some comments, that was not one of them, right, Andy?
Right, it was not.
And, and I, I know that it looks like a concern. It's true, it's true that typically they like driveways to line up and, and create intersections, it's actually safer condition.
Yeah.
Exactly, that, that certainly, that specifically was, was one thing, they wanted to line the Cedar Avenue up with the driveway, whereas today, it, it has a width that's almost double the width of Cedar Avenue, so it's.
The containment of that driveway is, is, you know, is, is a, a really, a good start in that, I do, thank you.
Yeah, that's one of the toughest lefts make, but a tough slip turns to make out of Krausers. Thanks. This was a light kind of decision.
Not good. All right, uh just finishing up on the loading, we talked about the pool company, the seafood market uh being, the deliveries would be made much earlier in the day, five to seven uh AM. There's a, there's actually a twenty foot uh long striped loading space uh to the east of the six fifteen uh building, where delivery trucks would, could park in that space, larger trucks obviously could park in the dedicated loading space that, that we're providing, but uh I'm, I, I, I believe tho- those delivery trucks would be much, much smaller as Mr. Bowman has testified. Uh, for the, lessly for the convenience store, deliveries uh would be made at the back of the building and small trucks would park in either a parking space at the rear of that building or the new dedicated loading space.
So essentially, we're, well, it has been somewhat haphazard, we're actually cleaning it up and giving everybody a location to keep it organized and safe.
That's correct. Moving on, uh next proposed improvement uh with respect to trash and recycling. At the rear of the six fifteen River Road building, Lot eleven, uh the existing uh thirty yard dumpster that, that exists would be removed.
And just so the board knows in response to Rich's letter, that was there because they're doing construction work at the site, they're gutting the building, so that's really just further construction and go on, the boat's gonna be removed, that was the owner's boat. And any excess pallets and the like all related to construction will be cleaned up and, and moved out.
Okay, uh so the two, two existing parking spaces uh would be removed and replaced with a, a twelve foot by eighteen foot trash enclosure, surrounded with a six foot high wooden fence and a double uh wooden gate at the front. Uh, the enclosure would have the two, would have two dumpsters. And like this, Crimco said, any, any pallets or other materials could be stored in that fenced in enclosure as well. Uh, currently behind the convenience store, there are two dumpsters and as requested by your engineer, uh we agreed to add a second fenced in uh trash enclosure in the same location that the dumpsters e- exist. That could, would contain dumpsters and, and the existing uh cooking oil container that, that are, that's all for behind.
And just to go a little step further, currently at, let's put up the numbers, what's one on the left?
Six, six fifteen.
The one on six fifteen, currently the borough picks up that trash, but once we have the dumpster, we'll have that scheduled for a private pickup. So that'll be private pickup and to the extent that the Krausers would ever have overflow garbage, once it's in the dumpster, first of all, it won't be unsightly uh, I'm sorry, in the enclosure, but second of all, we can increase the pickup time.
With private haul, we can increase that certain. With respect to outdoor storage, a sixteen foot by eighteen foot outdoor storage area fenced in uh for the pool company is proposed, which is highlighted in, in red on the exhibit. Uh, that enclosure would have a chain link fence surrounding it with a, a six foot uh double gate with a fabric awning above it. Uh, currently, uh pool chemicals are stored outside, including chlorine, salt, calcium. They would now be stored within that fenced in enclosure and that, that gate would be locked, so.
Sixteen, sixteen by eighteen?
Roughly, there's a, it's a small, it's the square, it's sixteen by eighteen, and then there's a small little, little piece below it.
Is that depicted on your?
It's depicted in red on this rendering.
Yes, it's also on the site plan.
Yes, okay, oh yes, this is not, the only two new things are, one we'll get to, the other is the, the loading area.
This is a new?
This is not new, this is on the site.
Oh wait, that's my mistake. It's new over what's there today, it's not new over what was on the site plan that was submitted.
What is the difference between this structure and what exists at present?
There's a smaller fenced in enclosure today, we're gonna be extending that, that, that structure further to the east.
So you're?
A little more storage space. All right, so all, so all.
Right, and the existing one is not covered where this proposed one would be covered.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just, uh again, before we move off of it, Rich had pointed out that the prior owners required to uh retain the safety data sheets for the various chemicals and we do have those on site and they are available that Borough owner wants to see.
I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you how to do your hearing. But it may be helpful later on, at least to just go through each of those items uh as well as the planners' items to the extent.
We will.
For us, has the ability to do that. Now, what's in, what's out?
Okay, we will, it's just as we're talking about and it's relevant, I'm just noting it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, briefly, a bicycle rack is proposed on the easterly side of the six fifteen building. Uh, the board planner had made a suggestion on as to the style and of course we'll, we'll uh work to submit something that's uh agreeable by, by everyone.
Well, we'll submit what the planner had suggested.
Right.
Okay, because I don't know who everyone is.
Uh, with, moving on to uh landscaping at the uh rear for the northwest corner of the site behind the six fifteen uh building, a five foot wide strip of existing pavement is proposed to be moved, about two hundred square feet uh in total, and that area will be planted with a line of uh evergreen trees, about ten in total. Uh, we proposed arborvitae, but uh the board planner had made a suggestion for a more uh deer uh res- resistant species, which of course we, we will update on the next uh planner submission. Uh, with respect to uh lighting?
Guys, a question on landscaping, um does that wrap around on the north side or does it stop, is it just on?
No, you know, it, it stops at, at the existing uh line of, I think it's Leland Cypress, some.
Okay, she was more block much more.
It kind of, it kind of. I'm glad you mentioned that, because it kind of creates like a perfect, like a, a solid screening in the back there.
And you're, you're, we're almost at the highlight, which is our rain garden, which is going in there, which is further reducing the coverage over what's existing today.
I'll, I'll jump, I'll jump to that. Um, so just with respect to stormwater management, uh the existing site uh almost entirely is impervious surfaces, as you're aware, and that drains to, to River Road. So adding to the second plan change shown on this rendering, uh we're proposing a slight uh reduction and we're already proposing a slight reduction in impervious coverage, which I mentioned. Uh, which will, which would uh reduce the peak runoff rates uh leaving the property. But in, in discussion with your engineer, we're proposing a, a rain garden at the rear of Lot eleven, which would be roughly four hundred square feet, that's shown as a green uh square behind the six fifteen uh building. It's very similar in size, I think, to the uh, to the rain garden on, on this municipal lot that was recently uh installed and that will be planted with uh wet tolerant uh perennial plantings. We would also divert uh a roof drain at the rear of the six fifteen building to the rain garden, so in addition to simply removing some uh existing asphalt, we would, you know, we would provide some uh peak runoff attenuation to reduce the flows leaving, leaving the site. Uh, so we would uh, there's actually a, an inlet on Navisink Avenue not far away that we can connect an overflow to, so it kind of works out perfectly and we'll, we'll submit all those details uh to the board on the next uh your submission.
So when you say to the board engineer for his review and approval
Correct.
And that would address that one item that you said that you didn't think the board should grant a waiver to, we're conceding and we're gonna provide you that. And the landscaping, obviously, I'm not sure who would be the? Okay, we'll submit the landscaping for the rain garden for the board planner to review.
And just keep in mind the, the inlet that it runs to, that's recharge system. There's two inlets, Rich, is there, is there one a curve inlet and one there's a beam flat? Yes. Are both, both of them are recharged? It's all recharge. Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll work with you to figure out the best way to.
I would think you want, at least for a bird.
Right.
For your rain garden.
So by, by reducing the four hundred square feet, what percent are we knocking off the average?
Plus the two hundred that we're already doing, but uh.
No, 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 but we submitted for a certain coverage, I want to know what our coverage will be, minus the four hundred.
Uh, what, what percentage?
Proposing ninety-eight.
Right.
And now you're going further down.
Right, but four hundred is approximately, if you want it exactly, I'll get that, but it's about, it's about five percent of the, of the nine thousand uh six hundred and two square foot lot.
So we're going down.
Lot eleven. Don't, I'm always talking about Lot eleven, correct. There's no lot, lot coverage reduction or lot, only, only ten point oh.
So we're going down quite a bit from what's there today.
So are those percentages again, so it's four hundred square feet and that takes away five percent of Lot elevens for uh impervious coverage?
That's right.
And then, because we are looking at this as two combined lots and a one, what is the percentage?
Have to get, you want me to look at it in, in total?
Ballpark is fine.
Yeah, ballpark, so we're, we're reducing uh six hundred total, the two hundred that we were already reducing and uh four hundred additional. The total site is twenty-seven thousand square feet, so we're looking at roughly.
You can get your calculator.
I, I, I will.
Will you?
You, you're reducing it. Six hundred total. So thousand total.
No, six hundred.
Six hundred, it's, it's.
No, but he did say six hundred plus four hundred.
Two plus four.
No, it's two plus four.
My fault, but.
Now it's six hundred total.
Six hundred total.
At a twenty-seven thousand.
Correct, twenty-seven, three, yes.
Is Steven, Mr. Billy is a calculator?
I just don't want to say it. I mean, what, what top six hundred is like two percent. So, less than two percent of the four hundred.
It wouldn't make sense if you were already reducing it ninety-eight at the time the planner took a look at it.
So in, in total, the, that would be two point two percent of the, of the total. Correct.
Uh, there's probably not many other options, right? Assuming that that's, this is the best efforts to, to, to create.
That's it, I mean, it's.
Some sort of stormwater.
We can, all right, so right now, it's almost, it's at a hundred on one and ninety-seven something on the other and there is no stormwater, so what we're and that could stay forever, so the benefit of this application is you're getting more green, albeit not as much as everybody might want, but it it's more green and we're gonna provide the stormwater that doesn't exist there today.
Uh, quickly with respect to lighting, uh three downward pointing LED uh building mounted fixtures are proposed, one uh at, those are highlighted in with a red square that says, actually says A next to it uh on, on each of the, the two buildings. We're providing one at the rear of each building and one on the east side of, of the six fifteen uh River Road building. I will provide the additional uh lighting calculations, details and information to your uh board professionals to uh confirm that the lighting is in compliance with the ordinance.
So right now, we were asking for a waiver, but we'll make the adjustment to eliminate that waiver.
That's correct, no, no waivers required. I will also add a note to the plans that the lights would be placed on timers and would be shut off one hour after closing, that's typically what we would offer, or has any other suggestions.
Okay, let's go back to signage. So, a- and I just want the board to understand, um, the variances as they relate to signage are, are one for the number of signs, which we'll get into, and the other, because your unit says the signs can't be in the setup. Our building is in separate. So when Doug was talking about a hardship versus flexible C, the variance for the signs being in the setup, you have no choice, that's where the building is, so that's clearly a hardship. And now, if we can walk through the signage, looking at A six. In, in the front, we're gonna have the Sandy Hook Seafood sign, which was uh recommended that instead of it being internally illuminated, we're going to, your planner suggested that it be more characteristic of the neighborhood to do loose light, exterior lighting, which we can agree to. Uh, and that's how many square feet, thirty square feet?
Uh, each, each sign?
No, 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 just the Sandy Hook sign is thirty square feet.
Correct.
Okay, and that complies with the maximum allowed.
Yes.
And then, uh you may or may not categorize it as a sign, but as you know, there's and the fact that there's a, that there's an existing mural on the side of the. and the fact that there's a that there's an existing mural on the side of this building that is perfectly apropos to this use. I thought we were proposing it, I didn't even realize that it existed there today. Uh so similar to that, the anchor on the front is purely decorative.
Yes.
But it's technically a sign. I'm I'm thinking ahead to the next thing, we apologize. Yes, official, not the anchor. And.
Can I ask a question, as we look at this view here, um there are tree uh that is currently there.
Yes, yeah, so this was. Yes, we're not, we're not taking the tree down, so this was a. This was a rudimentary attempt to show you the building and the improvements that we're going to provide, rather than going to a computer generated, yeah, you could see the base of the tree and the light, the lights thing. Yeah, so that was just to show that we're painting it and putting the awnings on and and what the signage looked like, and then if you flip to the next page, you see the um mural that I was discussing, and you see the trucks parked randomly that will no longer be there. Um there was a pool company sign where we're just replacing it with a Sandy Hook seafood sign, same size. And then we're just moving the new sign to identify the pool company, alright?
So the reorganization.
Right.
There's no, there there's no, but the hardship is because the it's in the setback, but that's.
Well, that's one.
Obviously can't be helped. Then then the then the number of signs, right? Okay, sorry.
I didn't get there yet, and that's what I was gonna, that's what I was gonna for, so one of the things that is a public benefit is if something is a better zoning alternative than the uh what the ordinance says, so your ordinance would actually allow more square footage of signage. So we could put a much bigger sign that would be unsightly a- and less characteristic of the neighborhood on the front. But what we're proposing to do is to break it down into smaller signs to help identify the different tenants. So in our opinion, it's a better zoning alternative to have a few more smaller signs for this multi-tenanted building, because as was pointed out by Ms. Miller, we meet the percentage. So that's the C two criteria as it relates to the signage, so the and I think that that was the extent of the variance relief as it relates to some.
Yes, I believe so.
In in terms of aesthetics, um the current, uh you know, this picture is, it looks nice, um in terms of the blue, the cedar shake. Um the current, uh I guess tile on the front of the building looks like it's sort of the asphalt tile that's gray. Um will you be using, you know, will it, you know, be using new shake on there to match the color as depicted in the picture?
So here's just a few questions.
So in the existing, in the existing building, there's uh sort of a gray asphalt. Well, yeah, right, is that, so will that, you know, will we, will there be shake that looks similar to what's.
Absolutely, it'll be, it'll be characteristic of the shore area, uh you know, uh Stanford White Cedar Shake, and we propose putting a nice cedar shake.
Okay.
Canadian, one of the regular nice cedar shake.
If we're allowed to still get. If it's still affordable.
That's right, so the the this, the cedar shakes is just for the roof area, right?
Correct.
Yeah, and then the last. And then you're gonna paint the building.
Correct, and we are proposing the awnings, and we made sure that those awnings are all over our property, are in our property, not over the property.
Got you.
Yeah, is there any additional lettering or signage on the left on the wall?
And, and any lights at the door, like a wall back at the front door or anything? Lighting?
The existing building has light.
Two exist.
So we're not changing ones.
Um there is an iteration, I believe it may have not, but the goose necks, if we're gonna put the goose necks, whatever fixtures we want to put on top, we we carry that design up up the way through the entire building to make it design and aesthetically pleasing to have it uniform. So we have a professional design team that we use on the exterior of the building, and uh they're gonna be coming in and overseeing the entirety to make sure, again, it's commensurate with Stanford White Cedar Shake, um and and how we do things in Monica.
And and one other question on the on that front step, um is there anything that you've done to improve the front step in terms of the distance from the, you know, the step to the to the, you know, the sole height, um of the door, um is is there any plans there? I mean, you may not be able to adjust it because of this setback and.
Yeah. There there's no plans right now.
Yeah, can't do anything about.
No, and i- if we were going to adjust that, let me just see if that step is on our property or on the Borough's property.
I'm guessing it's on the Borough's.
It is, um, yeah, it's on the Borough's property, so, or the county's property, I should say, so we're gonna prefer to just leave that exactly. Well, following Mr. Doug's suggestion from earlier, which I promised you I was gonna get to, if we could now go through the letters and identify anything we didn't address, then I'll 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 start with Rich's, uh since it's more technical in nature. So with regard to number one, we agreed to comply with. We've offered the testimony with regard to two, three and four. Oh, with regard to five, so Andy, currently, our pavement extends a little bit over our property line until lot uh ten, and we're not proposing to change that, correct?
That's correct.
So to the extent that the board has any strong feeling about it, and I discussed it with Rich, we could make sure that at least our striping stays on our property. And then that way, the parking spaces would be on our property. We're not proposing to go onto our neighbor's property and remove pavement, because we don't have the right to do that.
I'm not sure I understand.
So that this strip of.
Which arch number, we've been on four or five?
It was five, right?
Five?
Yes.
Okay.
This is uh referring to the strip of pavement, uh parking areas that's over the property line onto lot ten to the east. It just, it's only a a a a two, at at the at the most, over over the property line. It's hard to see on the small exhibit, I'm sure, but uh.
And we're just not proposing to cut it back because it's not on our property, but we can make sure the striping is all on our property.
There's really, there's two items, the the approachment that you talked about, which I think pulling the striping back makes sense, just for future. The other item is the the improvement standards require parking to be set back off the side lot lines in accordance with minimum yard apartments of accessory dwellers.
Well, there's a hardship.
It's a it's a design, it's an improvement standard, it's not a, it's not a variance condition.
And it, right, and we're not changing it, because it's it's existing parking that is there, I imagine it was striped at some point, uh anyway, so.
Point, yes, the, if anything, that's been assembled in the rear, they do park for particular along that lot line.
Right, so we're, I I would argue it isn't a new design anyway, but we are willing to make sure that our striping stays off the neighbor's property.
Existing condition.
Right.
And Rich, that's your rec, like, that's how it would be going, I gotta see, is it the best way to do it?
I would handle the, from the improvement standard, it's a pre-existing condition, we're simply restriping. Since they're gonna restripe, let's pull it back to the property line to to uh remove the approach.
And we're fine with that, and then, uh can I, I'm sorry, Donna Miller, um is there a change in elevation between the two properties? Is that a curb or?
There's a curb and it appears to be like a two foot sidewalk, there's not much, but there is some, there's a six inch.
And there's a wall that's in the front that kind of like tapers off, yeah.
Good, Donna? Yeah, I don't, I mean, you know, it's. You, yeah.
Was it the wall that we see um running down the east side, just beyond the parking?
Yes.
And that's, that's not, that's the other property, so.
All of the property and it backs up to their access lane there.
And that that kind of, you know, from their perspective, that defines their property kind of practice, right, so.
Just, could I ask it a different way? So if you were to conform with the design standard in the behind Crowe's, could you still maintain this traffic flow?
No, we would lose all those parking spots.
The ones on the east side, or even the ones.
What's the accessory structure setback, Rich?
At least five feet.
Yeah.
You you would lose the the.
The entire.
Box in the middle. And and you probably couldn't get the turn, the turn would work.
Right.
Access aisle, everything gets shifted over.
Correct. And again, it's not a variance, it's just a design standard, and typically, it would likely be to allow for um to allow for the space to put landscaping and the like, but here, it's business up against business, and as was said, it was up against our access aisle. So there's no real impact to the neighbor.
Would it, given this change of 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 the property, would it make sense to try to acquire that land from the neighbor? To clean up this line?
No, it wouldn't, because to acquire that land from the neighbor would require subdivision. We're a tenant in the subject property, we don't own this property. So we don't have the ability to acquire that, and I don't know if losing that land would create deficiencies with regard to the other lot as to lot area coverages, setbacks and the like. So no, I think that it's it's operated like this for decades without issue, I think that just by moving the lines, it'll effectively put it all on our property and it would really not be an issue.
So in the very very beginning, when you introduced everybody, these are all tenant owners, not property owners of this enjoying?
No, so the applicant is a tenant.
Correct.
So that's who's, that's the application before you was from the tenant. The other names were the names of the owner entities who own the property, but they don't have an application before you.
I- i- in a sense, you cannot proceed with this application without the owners' permission, and a- and and at least in theory, the owners also agree that whatever conditions that we set
Right, but the neighbor didn't consent to us acquiring their land or participating in a subdivision of the life.
To your question about what.
Right.
Has the, has the neighbor lot ten offered an opinion on on this?
As what?
Has the neighbor of lot ten, the owner of lot ten, offered an opinion on any of this?
Not to us. We can certainly stipulate.
No, I'm not trying to make extra work, I was just curious.
Yeah, they were noticed.
Yeah, they were caught, right, so.
Yeah. Alright, so number six is with regard to the active transportation plan. And the uh items that we agreed to, that I stipulated to, was incorporating the high-visibility crosswalk striping over the brick aesthetic, and and Doug, if you look at the last page of um it's it's page forty-one, if you look at the last page of the letter, it's that white striping that goes across Cedar Avenue and of course River Road. And then uh we would agree to install the buffer uh next to our driveway where it shows those uh three trees. We would do that as well. The one I had indicated earlier, if you look to the left, there's a little island. Andy, that's the area where our the the pedestrians would access our site, so we can't put that one in, right?
That's correct, we're proposing this, a striped access aisle down the inside of the six fifteen building.
So it's really just the first, first and last bullet points?
Correct.
Not anything in.
Correct. Um number seven, we've already agreed to that we would change the plantings to the recognition of the board uh planner. Number eight, of course, the fire lane would be subject to the borough fire official, I would, Sheila, was this submitted to him already, and we just didn't get a report back then? Okay, so you're off the.
We'll, we'll take care of that.
Okay. Um and obviously, we'll comply with whatever he he suggests. Uh we went over uh in detail with regard to the uh new trash enclosures, great improvement over what's existing, as well as the private hauling.
Is what, uh was there existing dumpsters for the, I guess, your lot eleven apparently?
Cans, and the uh borough picked up the cans.
Where are they located on the site?
Side of the building, I think.
So similar spot to where they are now, or just up against the side of the building?
No, I think up again.
Behind the fence.
Behind the, right, behind the the, you wanna point to where the existing fences.
The existing fenced enclosure, right?
Right, right there.
Yeah.
I think that's where they were on the photo.
That was Mr. Henderson.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
And just on the, just since we're talking about the trash, is recycling going in there as well, or would it be trash invisible for recycling?
Nope.
Private, private following for both, okay.
Number ten, we talked about, we have those safety sheets, wow, safety sheets on site. And with regard to number eleven, I'm just gonna go through them quickly, uh the boat winter storage will cease. The thirty uh cubic yard dumpster will cease, as we'd indicated earlier. The loose pallets will be stored either in the storage area, the large storage area for the chemicals, or in the trash enclosure. The commercial truck storage, I believe that that was a truck, is it related, uh when I spoke to Rich, is it related to a construction company?
Yeah, it's not related to the site.
Okay. Uh we went over the pool chemicals, uh how they'll now be enclosed in an area and covered, so there won't be any issue there. The overflowing dumpsters, we will have the convenience store pick up more frequently. The planter installed in River Road, I've since spoken to Rich as well as the administrator, that was actually installed by the borough, and that's not on our property, so we're gonna skip over that one. Parking in non-designated areas, obviously by striping this and um delineating, that's gonna go wrong. And the random delivery trucks parking and unloading, that's going to be addressed as well as part of this. And then lastly, as number twelve I indicated, we will submit a detailed shared uh access and parking, he's been agreeing for your attorney to review.
And you you mentioned earlier, the convenience store dumpsters are gonna fasten?
Yes.
Just, just on those items, you provided your fence testimony with regard to operation and employee, what I'll refer to as employee load with regard to seafood facility. Can you also go through that same, and I don't know if you're a engineer, regarding Mr. Henderson's operation of convenience store? So we have an idea of, with this additional use.
Yes.
We have hours of operation, I think the board can begin to see, okay, there's gonna be some crossover traffic between seafood operations. I'll get into a little more detail with regard to what they do, whether they have walk-in people purchasing that.
Yep. Sure, so I'm gonna have Mr. Henderson come back up. I'm told by Mr. Henderson's stepfather that there are no people that come there other than the employees, so why don't we talk about your hours?
Yeah, so so that's part of what we're doing here, is moving out of that retail space, um so we're we're no longer gonna have retail customers um coming into the place door, um and we're just solely gonna be in office, um now for the employees to come in and out of um and, you know, run the business out of a small office.
And how many office employees do you have?
Uh I, we have one secretary and then um in the office.
And and the other employees are just coming, picking up and going out to the sites.
Correct, getting their vacuums, their equipment, downloading their trucks and.
So you you're really just opening, closing, cleaning?
Correct.
And the chemical use is just for the openings and closes?
Correct.
So you don't anticipate walking customers alone?
Correct.
Just to purchase chemicals for use.
Correct.
Okay, and that happens generally the, between eight and nine, you said, right? Like the employees like loading up their vans or getting, picking up that equipment, happens at eight, between eight in the morning and nine.
And then when they return the trucks, they just come park the trucks and take their vehicles home?
Correct, yeah, usually the the loading, unloading, the bulk of that's in the morning, in the afternoon, and it, people are usually out pretty early.
And then as it relates to the um hardware, there are no customers, that's just a storage area for them.
And assuming the company's policy will be no more parking in the
Isle.
The aisle, correct?
I I'm glad Mr. Henderson's here. I did tell his stepfather that, but I'm glad he's here.
Does anyone, is that the deliveries for the convenience store happening probably, when, does anyone know?
They're throughout the day, but as was testified by Andy, they're usually in box trucks that can pull right into a parking space. And I would think, as a convenience store owner, they would do that in off-hours, not at their busiest times.
Yeah.
And I don't know the hours of the convenience store, I don't know if it's twenty-four seven or not, I'm sure you guys know much better than I.
I don't believe it is. Till ten thirty?
Well, I I think, I think the hard volume there is is post-school, right? And I think the kids, so I wanted to actually raise that, cause but it's very bike-friendly town. Um what, does anyone have a concern about a seafood, you know, an elevated chef-inspired seafood retail uh and and children going there? I don't feel like this is the type of place kids are gonna go, you know, but should be worth discussing, I think, the potential of more bike traffic through there, we thought about that at all?
We don't, our market is not the children, as was testified to by Luke, I mean, our market is high-end seafood for family planning and and meals. It's not like, you know, they're gonna be able to come in and have a snack.
Right.
Yeah, it it's, it's. Yeah, it, it's, it's very unlikely, but to the extent that there is more bike traffic, we're providing a bike rack. Uh, and it's, it's close in proximity to the sidewalk, so.
Does, does the convenience store currently have a bike rack? I don't believe they do, right?
No, no.
Can that get proposed in here? Cause I mean, I don't think you want the kids parking in the bike rack next to the seafood store and then having to go through two lanes of traffic to go to the convenience store. They could both throw their bikes on the sidewalk or get a parking spot that someone's gonna run over. But far, far right up against the property line?
Yeah, we'll find a place to put a bike rack.
I mean, and I think.
I think it's a great suggestion.
And I think the bike rack on the seafood's fine too, it was, you know, like we said, the town's bike-friendly and adults will ride their bikes there and pick something up, so.
Okay, yeah, I think it's a good point.
Just to go back to, to what I was trying to make me interested, with regard to the storage for the hardware. Are there deliveries? Are there pickups? Are there drop-offs? Can anyone speak to what happens at the hardware?
Uh, yeah, generally the hardware store gets two big deliveries a year um to that site. Uh, most of their other deliveries are going to their actual storefront, uh, but they do like a big spring delivery. Like fertilizer, um, you know, all the spring stuff. Um, that just came in maybe two weeks ago, so it's early March.
And, and what size truck is that?
Um, I, I think it's a thirty-foot box truck, so it's a relatively large truck. Um, and then they have a similar one um, you know, later on in the summer.
That they come in vans and vans or pickups and pick up their stuff to resupply?
Correct, yeah, just the normal, small vans, yeah.
Okay, so and do you know how many employees or, or does anybody monitor the storage?
For the hardware store?
Yeah.
Uh, no one monitors it, but, but they are back and forth uh pretty frequently.
But there's nobody, there's no office, there's no person that's there.
Yeah, just usually one guy with a stock truck will come, you know, and, and usually all hours.
My next question is with regards to the seafood operation. You say it's designed to be a market, but I mean, is there gonna be something for a food prep area in, inside that facility?
Yeah, so a- absolutely, because the food that's.
I mean, cooked to clean shrimp.
Correct, if you look at what we moved in as a five, and I apologize for not going through it, I thought it was somewhat self-explanatory. I'll let Luke come up and just walk you through it.
It probably is.
I know you're not, you've done it a lot of decades.
So I will, I will offer my testimony. I am not a chef. I have a lot of chef friends. And uh they helped very much with the design and layout of, of this store. So a lot of, there's a small kitchen, you'll notice in this stuff. A lot of that is for uh preparation of food, so people can come in and grab and go. So the idea is busy families um coming back from the north or still and so forth, they want some healthy options to eat. So they can walk in and they'll have some pre-prepared foods, heat and ready to eat. We think that's a big part of what we're going to do. In addition, one of our products is a steam pot where you have a large steam pot with different uh seafood components, so on and so forth. You put it on your stove, you can have a beer, I won't judge you if you do, and you can cook it and it's ready to go in a little while. Um, so thank you very much.
And then, and then you have some seafood counters, you have the refrigerator.
That's right.
And then the storage in the back.
That's right. So the storage in the back is to store our frozen products. We uh do uh have some shelving and some display areas that we think we have some frozen. Some other frozen products people can come in, they can grab um their products and then move along. And again, as we mentioned, there'll be some prepared products, there will be some lobsters and so on and so forth. So the idea being that when you walk into the seafood market. Um, that you can, you know, talk to a chef at the, at the counter, he can guide you as to what you might do for trying to figure out what your dinner's gonna be for your family. Um, you can grab your products if you know what you wanna go and uh and be on your way.
So it, it's not unlike, almost like a, any kind of store that they'd be familiar with, like a.
Seafood market really is a, is a good example of what they did. They had some.
I'm trying to get a handle on that, so I'm, so I'm envisioning, I come in, I've already got something prepared. I see tartar sauce, I see cocktail sauce, I see lemons, I see those kinds of things thrown to the bag. Those leaves that would normally be associated with that, with that meal or preparation of that meal.
Yes, okay, yes, yeah, so we have all that. And again, the kitchen is mainly a preparation kitchen. Um, and again, too, we'll probably use some of those, um, you know, we hope to um have some, um, you know, some of our platters. We can come in and order some platters to go, so that's a big product offering of what Second Jetty does, um, to a lesser extent than Willow. Um, but it's a really big thing around the holidays, so on and so forth. We wanna have shrimp platters and all that sort of thing for people to pick up. So when they are, you know, having their guests, their families over, they have uh, you know, nice options.
Would this be a facility where you would use to load up for catering, to, to load up to then go off-site for catering? Or is that?
Um, I, I would say, I would say it's possible. Um, it's not really in the business plan right now, um, but we do think, we do think there would be an element of off-site catering. We do think that's possible. Um, again, it's not in the business plan now. What we think now is the primary business is going to be like, if, you know, furniture shop circles and walked in. We walk into the departments, they add, you know, different things, heat, ready to eat, things that were prepared and a lot of prepared healthy foods. And that's really the envision for, for what we've been, the, the kitchen would be used for in any water space.
Okay, so we date on a day-to-day basis. Deliveries for, uh, uh, do you get ice trucks? Do you ice things down? Do you do that on site?
So we would have a ice machine on site um in the premise, inside of this space. We have our own ice machine. Um, and so typically what happens is the Fulton Fish Market, um, usually they, our driver will leave the Fulton Fish Market at two or three o'clock in the morning. He'll drive, he has a couple of different spots, he'll pull to our spot at probably, you know, again, four thirty, five, six o'clock in the morning, very, very early. They'll load up the seafood into um storage area and then the chefs will come. Uh, we envision all the seafood product being, being whole fish, so we're not getting, I, I reference junk. You're not even a technical seafood term, but we get really, really high-quality products. Um, and so those.
So you're getting, you're getting crated iced fish delivered and then you prepare that?
Uh, it's not crated necessarily, um, but they come in, you know, in some, in, in boxes. Depending like a box of salmon is your traditional styrofoam box. Um, there's a couple of uh different salmon in there, and so, you know, a couple of boxes of seafood will come in. Uh, we would put it into our storage area, then the chefs would come in the morning to prepare it for those days often.
And what kind of then? Waste of refuge, recycling, do you use generally?
Yeah, okay, so. Right, waste is a really good term. We try to use very good waste. So for example, I can tell you what we do at the restaurant. Um, I said I'm not a chef, but I'm gonna call up some of Kyle's uh stuff as we do. So any of the bodies that we have, let's say lobsters for an example, right? We're processing lobsters to make lobster salad. Um, what we do is we take bodies of roast lobsters, we boil it down, we make a pot with it to make lobster soup. So a lot of what we're trying to do is sustainable, it's trying to reuse the products and get the most out of the products that we bring in. Um, the same thing with different salmon, any of the salmon or tunas or anything else that we're getting, we use every scrap of meat. Um, every little bit of it just for purposes of being, and, and people that care about the water and the ecosystem, but also for business purposes, right? Um, so we try to apply, or the chefs, very, very luckily, so we try to apply creative energy to um minimizing waste with all of our products. To answer the question, um, your, the standard dumpsters that are there, um, with the regular pickup would be no issue. We're not gonna generate excess waste. Um, we don't foresee any of those kinds of issues.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, as, may I move on to the chair?
Yes.
As soon as I find it, I'm gonna move on to the planner's letter. There it is. So on the planner's letter, page one is informational, page two is informational. Page three, uh, she lists the existing non-conformities and notes that there's no intensification of those. Uh, in section three, she notes that we're improving the circulation and access to the property. Uh, page four, there's discussion about the loading area and how the loading works, which we offered uh testimony to. Discusses the driveway, which we talked about, the parking standards, which we talked about. The bike parking, which we've offered both at our location as well as now the Crowzers. The lighting, how we're going to comply with the ordinance. The plantings were agreeing to her recommendation. We offered all of the testimony with regard to the signage. Uh, and the sign lighting, we've agreed to comply with her recommendation. That brings us to page, to number seven, and you might have missed it. It was in, in his testimony, the gates to the fence will be the wood gates that will match the enclosure.
Yeah, I'm sorry, real quick, the um, the li- is there any lighting in the back? Cause isn't that where the residential is? Is the, the?
We're not proposing any.
There's no lighting in the back, right?
No, no, there's lighting.
Okay.
And then a, as we talked about, the, the, the sea bearings is some of the signage are hardship based on the building. And the other are the flexibility, which we're offering is a better zoning alternative, to have less square footage of signage just broken up. As it relates to the design exception, it's a pre-existing non-conforming condition, we're not making it any worse. As it relates to the parking, and we're already agreeing to comply with the light, so that goes away. And I think that that addresses everything, I don't know.
On the board, have any, you know?
The question or comment is, I, I keep staring at this walkway, which I think is great for.
Which, which walkway, Mr.?
Uh, the walkway east of the building.
It's striking.
Strike, sorry, striking, not a, not a.
Just, yeah, just pavement with a strike.
But the intent is to, that's a pedestrian walkway.
The intention, right now, it's, it's like, uh, they're almost forty feet of, of a paved driveway with no striping. We're trying to create an area for pedestrians, especially the barrier-free parking area, have an access in front of buildings.
So it's basically to delineate where you're supposed to drive versus where patrons are gonna be.
Would, would it be overwhelming, uh, and I mean, very careful, cause I, I do like this project, I'll expose that, you know, like, like. My sport, but would it be overwhelming to put a sidewalk along the side of the building there? And I'll ask for each the question as well, does that have a big, you know?
When you say overwhelming, I mean, the, the overwhelming part of it might be the cost.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious if that's been examined or talked about as a possibility versus just the striping?
Yeah.
If you just do a sidewalk and grade, it's only gonna change the treatment. Or the texture of what you're walking on. So right now they're proposing striping the existing asphalt, delineating it as a pedestrian way. To provide a safe, you know, access to and from parking areas. If you were to do a parky, a sidewalk area. And I don't think the grading would really work because of the way the building is situated.
Just that it's an existing building.
Elevations. You'd have to curb it and, and really create, you know, and then you get into ADA where you have to get it off the sidewalk. You know, so I did actually kinda look at that while we were reviewing it and.
What about putting like planners in or something to sort of again create separation along that walkway?
You can call it yellow posts.
Well, yeah, I mean, something that, something that's not again.
More pleasing.
Yeah, more pleasing.
Than, than the stripes.
Yeah, it creates a break between the, you know, the active, I mean, I'm thinking about people, you know, walking alongside a building there. You know, just something to delineate, create separation from the, the, you know, traffic movement.
I think the problem with planters is, is that we don't have enough room to put planters and still have ADA accessibility. So.
And you also don't wanna create a projectile.
Correct.
Because you're gonna have vehicles moving in and out of the site.
I, I.
If it doesn't meet certain criteria and standards.
Mr. Nick, I understand what you're trying to do and, and it's fair, but I, I also think you have to look at how much we really are aesthetically improving this. So yes, in a perfect world, we would dig it all up and sort over. But, you know, we have the hardship of this is what's there, this is what can stay there. We really have conceded to every single ask. As it relates to this, so while that may not be the prettiest part of this, it makes the most sense in the context of what's there.
I appreciate how hard you've worked, the, the, the improvements on the site are hard, you know.
Well, actually, it's not, you say prettiest, it's not the aesthetics that I'm thinking about with the striping, it's the. Um, defined walking spaces, right? And. I, I agree, a, a sidewalk in, you know, uh, in a perfect world is probably the best solution, but that probably isn't. Uh, feasible, but is there some way to create and define a walking space with those, I don't know what they call, the yellow posts that are, you know. Sunk into the asphalt every ten feet that will clearly define a driving lane and a walking lane in that part of the building?
Uh, I mean, a- again, it, it's gonna take up space and it's an added expense to what we're already doing there. One thing we could suggest is, and, and I was only saying aesthetic because I think I was responding to something Mr. Nika said. With how it's going to look, but perhaps we could actually paint it as opposed to striping it. To delineate it as a walkway and maybe it could even be a decorative painting. Uh, to, so it's clearly not part of the roadway, whether it be blue, whether it be something in the theme of. The seafood store, but it would be a solid painted area way. That would uh not have the striping that would indicate more like a parking lot.
Well. I, I mean, I, I understand that at first I was going to offer some kind of suggestion like that, but title thirty-nine is like, drivers understand. That's a no-go zone. They may not respect it, but they understand it.
So this is my issue, in an area that has a history of people pulling a parking parallel to a building with a grab-and-go. Model, I think people will not respect the striping.
But I don't wanna turn it into, you know. Oh, brick paving looking. To give it that aesthetic.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
And then people are parking on it anyway, and then there's no. You know, even implied repercussions to, for, for cars to be placed in that space. And it's that it's a refuge for pedestrians. I think it needs to, we either need to do something.
It doesn't need to elevate you.
What, what about, what about something to the effect, right? I agree, I think that the striping. I think drivers, Australians aren't used to it, but what about a temporary solution? I also think that as the public starts to see how the new spaces are defined and the flow of traffic, I think everyone will assimilate to that. But in the meantime, or in the interim, what about some little no-parking posts? As people learn the new, that you said, in the striping, that sit there during business hours. That get people used to having that with their dobbery.
Right, and I think that that would, you'd have to come over and hold it apart there, so I think that that's a great suggestion.
And I think people will get used to it personally, they will understand the intent.
And that's my concern. It wasn't so much the, the look of the striping, it was the. I can, I can definitely see adults parking in the back and walking to the front. I get that. I can also see people pulling up to the side and doing that.
Yeah.
My bigger concern is what was raised earlier about us being the biking town. Lots of kids already congregate in the front parking lot in front of Crowzers after school with their bikes. That's a, that's, that's a given for this area. They don't always put their bike in the right spot. And most of the, most of the time, it, it, it tends towards the eastern side where that wall is, where there's a patch of dirt and, and that's cool. I think putting a, I'm not against it, but I think putting a biking rack right here in this walkway where we want people to walk and feel safe. Impedes their ability to walk through there and invites kids to put their bike there and walk across the street to the tablo or to elsewhere. San Su, wherever they wanna go, and kind of abandon their, and maybe not be so. I mean, our kids are great, but the idiots when it comes to, you know, bikes where they wanna push their bikes.
I, I think that that's, I, I.
And I don't wanna, I don't wanna give you guys more cost or more to-dos, but I just wanna, I think we all collectively think through this from the aspect of like. Whether we're biking or whether kids are biking and, and their behaviors and.
I think it's a great point. I think that we don't have a bike rack now at the convenience stores, if we put it there instead of. In this area, it would encourage them to stay over there and not park here. So I, I, we're okay with removing it from that striped area and just having the one over by the Crowzers. If that's what the board prefers.
And I think what you guys were saying is, I, I, I was thinking something delineating, some way of delineating, and again, we're conscious of cost here. And signs, even what they did in, in, in Red Bank around that hospital crossing, they put up some like kind of fake chain and like.
Velva ropes, velvet rope.
You know.
What, what I would offer is.
At the beginning, you know, something that maybe gets pulled back over time.
If the board is going to vote favorably, I would ask that that be a condition that we work it out with your planner and your engineers to the appropriate treatment. To delineate that pedestrian area rather than try and decide it right now.
I'm agreeable to.
Although Rich is probably more difficult than anybody sitting up there. I'm willing to take that risk.
You haven't worked with Mia.
Right.
And, and similarly for the, the space in the front where we're gonna, you're gonna shrink that, that curb opening. You've talked about doing some landscaping. On the plan, it does call out brick pavers. So is that still, is that for certain or that's still?
That, that was, well, there were, there are brick pavers that exist and you're pro- proposing to extend that. But then after seeing the comments from the board, the board engineer, we, you can, you can do some landscaped. Uh, areas within that favored area, uh, we can come up, you know, we can work together to come up with a.
I think that would be, that would be great.
Rich, would you have any follow-up? Cause we've moved right to the planner memo. I just wanted to make sure you had any follow-up comments or questions um on your memo.
Yeah. Now, we cover every animal.
I thought we did, but just wanna make sure. I, I have one question, or for Doug, actually, um, I'm sure there's an easy explanation, but this, this document here from nineteen ninety-nine in the exhibits. What, what is the intent of this document to show?
The intent of this document, I'm assuming it wasn't specifically addressed, but to demonstrate that. The pre-existing non-conforming conditions were.
the pre-existing non-conforming conditions were actually reviewed, they didn't just happen by happenstance. That there was approvals for those, and that gives them the basis to say, okay, we're gonna rely upon those, I'm assuming that's what you.
It, it is, and also I believe Rich required us to submit any prior resolutions as part of our completeness. So that was why, and it was through that that we discovered that the D restriction was never put on the property, which we I'm sure that Doug will write it into his current resolution, we can record that resolution and then the D restriction becomes part of that.
Simple explanation. Yeah.
Rich, nothing in the testimony that you've heard this evening, I know that you recommended uh, granting of the waivers, that was your position of work, except with regard to item number twenty-five. Are you still looking for the complete stormwater amounting plans, or are you satisfied with regard to what the applicant has done by way rain garden, increased impervious coverage? Are we still requiring?
Increased.
Decre- I'm sorry. Decrease. Increasing pervious coverage. You, are you satisfied with that, or are you still looking for stormwater amounting, of course?
I am satisfied, they took, covered in their testimony, they did additional, um, improvements to the site.
Has anybody figured out what the new percentage is for in terms of reduction?
No, but if the board is going to vote favorably, we will get that to you before any resolution would be adopted.
Has, has there been a submission of either colors or samples of exterior sods and/or awning?
No, just, just what we moved in as a six, and it will be similar in appearance to that. Similar materials, the color might be a little bit lighter, it might be a little bit different, but it'll be similar.
And awning, we'll submit something for we don't even have dimensions, I don't know what I.
Uh, we actually did provide the dimensions on the site plan.
Oh, okay.
Right?
Do we know, do we know?
Yeah, yes.
Do we know materials?
Well. Can you imagine?
Well, I, I don't.
It'll be, it'll be canvas.
Canvas.
Canvas, okay. But we can provide at least some kind of a mock-up from whoever you're getting, I'm sure you're not gonna do that, your chefs aren't gonna make it, someone's gonna make it for you. Uh, just get us, get us that information, part of that.
Yes, sir. Yes, Rich, maybe one more thing on stormwater, the, in the, the rear parking lot, that, that sort of center area that's got four spots, there's, um, a hashed area that's kind of got a rounded edge to it. Is that an opportunity to be dehardening and softened anymore?
To be what Mr. Billy didn't have.
To, to make that area green? Just curious.
Nothing to live there.
Yeah, couple things, um, it's gonna create an issue with snow removal. It's also gonna create an issue with circulation, even though it's striped, it still allows some additional area for returning.
So you want them to don't drive over.
And everything's flowing from north, uh, from the north to the south, so that's sort of towards the high point of the site. So it really wouldn't be capturing too much. But, you know, balance point, yeah.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Donna, did you have any, any comments or questions on your letter? Before we, I want to open up to the public for questions and comments.
Uh, no, I think they've, uh, satisfied my concerns.
Anything else from the board before we open up to the public for questions or? So, uh, any members of the public wish to speak or, or wish to comment, questions, Mr. Merrick? How about any further drive? So I'll just read the testimony you give before the board gives a truth, we'll treat that one as true.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so I have four questions, two of them have already been answered, so thanks. Uh, what's the purpose of continuing the two-way drive when you get past Crowzers? Those, why doesn't it just become a one-way?
It's really.
Going up this way, that's.
Park, parkings, just accessing the, the.
Up here.
Parking spaces, correct.
But couldn't you just access them one way, wouldn't that create a safer parking lot in general?
I think it would. I, I'll defer to Rich if there's any safety issue here, I don't know that there's a safety issue, and I think it, it would be a, it would not be good for our.
Well, the safety issue is you're backing up into two-way traffic, actually. Which I think is something we try to avoid even on our streets, if we can.
I think a couple things. We would have to sign it in such a way to force people to go around in the back. So then you would be potentially putting a, a signpost.
Do not enter.
Do not enter.
Yeah, do not enter, or one-way, or, or flow out. But I think just I think the first spaces that people are gonna look for if they're going to this new business is along the east side of that building.
There.
They're gonna just, out of habit, drive straight forward.
Right.
First spot.
Understood, and it, it would be awkward to put it, I guess, here. Because then you're already coming up, okay. All right, it was just about, second question is, does this building share the same HVAC system?
As what?
The pool and the seafood.
I can answer that question, um, there's a single rooftop unit, um, that includes the entire entity, and we don't propose any changes to HVAC unit.
So I, I assume obviously from like you, the pool storage, you know what you're doing, you do it for a long time, MFBS sheets, all that. If there were a situation God forbid, where some sort of toxic vapor from the pool kind of came up, is there any issue with the fact that the pool storage is right up against the beach?
I, I can answer that, I have a construction background, so when we go to submit construction documents to the construction department, they will probably mandate our architect of record to come in and, um, and construct the partition wall and the imaging wall between the two premises. As such, we probably have to deal with that condition, I mean, it's a very good point. Uh, but when we get to the construction side and set of things, and the architect will be designing the wall, I'm sure they'll take that into consideration, but you absolutely should, that's addressed.
Awesome. Beautiful, that's all I have, thank you. Kind of goes both ways, you don't want the toxic fish fumes going. So.
That's not even very good, isn't it?
Any other, uh, any other comments from the, from the public, Tracy?
Hi, I'm Tracy Golden, she'd be great to have.
You sound, just read the testimony, give the board a view of the truth, that'll be true.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Um, I'm familiar with, uh, this operation, I'm very excited about coming to Fairview then. I will be one of those people, um, on my bicycle, going home with some fresh seafood, I think it's a really nice addition to the mix of businesses in Fairview then. Um, I also want to acknowledge the property owner and your commitment to the active transportation plan, fortunately our master plan, and shrinking down that curb button and expanding a new landscaped area in front of Crowzers at the sidewalk. That's a benefit to the entire neighborhood, and, uh, that's good for our kids, that's good for all of us, so. I love the rain garden, um, I actually think it's just a really great application, and I appreciate all the work that you've been doing to look forward to shopping now. Thank you for your time.
Yes.
Hi, Karen LaFerris, Senator Conley in court.
Sean, just want to give the board a view of the truth.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, and also the Secretary of the Fairview Business Association, I just want to commend the owners of this property for making substantial ramifications. I want to thank them for, uh, their investment in the borough for many, many years. In addition to operating their business, uh, and keeping their property vital. Uh, they have been very active in the business association and have supported many community efforts. So I just hope that the borough can be as friendly to them as they have been to us, thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else? Oh, and I, yeah, any, uh, anybody on Zoom, uh, Sheila, there is looking to make a comment?
No.
Great. Good catch. So, uh. So. Any further presentation?
No, I think the public, I, I think that the public summed it up pretty well. I think, well, we have some nonconformities and some slight variances overall, when you look at this, the benefits far outweigh any detriment. We've addressed everything that your, uh, board planner, your board engineers asked for, and the board members themselves. Uh, I, I, I'm not gonna go through all of the conditions, I think we testified to them, Doug, I trust that you have them all.
No, I was just hanging out, yes, I got, I got, I think I'll read them into the record if we miss anything, something. Usually when we frame the resolution, it's often.
Okay.
Excuse me, my sport.
Any, any, uh, any board member, anyone, all right, let's get started.
I'll be framing a resolution for a motion, second, this is a resolution for approval, site plan approval with certain variants from the for the testimony that this is gonna be for the, uh, establishment of the seafood retail market, and a continuation of the other uses of the site. The applicant has agreed to abide by the conditions set forth, or at least the concerns set forth in the engineering report as well as the recorded climbers, just certain things that the board has discussed, all of the conditions concerned, um, in the plantings, the rain garden, the landscaping, um, presently designed to create some recharge and waivers that we've already discussed that have been, uh, been recommended by uh, our engineer concerning no need any longer for the stormwater, uh, light profiles that have been discussed, placement of the bike rack, now we have removed the one bike rack, I'm assuming removed the one bike rack from this area, the placement of the bike rack at the, uh, convenience store.
Where was it, with removal, or is it in addition?
I, I understood it was to be removed, if it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it, it was gonna lock the path.
Locking a lock, yeah. That was my understanding, the applicant is also agreeing to abide the fixtures of the awning, uh, and/or the type of material, and that they will work with the borough engineer concerning the treatment of the pedestrian walkway. I, there was not a discussion of, but I don't, and I don't know if there's going to be, the loading area, was that depicted by signage?
Yeah, it.
Or just, or just cross hashing, or?
We didn't show a sign yet, but we, we just, we're showing striping only on the plan?
Okay, I, I just wanted to know how people understand how that's gonna be delineated, can you work with the engineer to make sure that's appropriate and delineated? Um, I think we discussed the other conditions of the removal of the, the boat, storage of the, of the pallets. Um, I, I basically identified with regard to the bulleted items, you were not going to address you were going to address the first and the last, but not going to address the number one.
Subject to the county, so that which is in the red flag.
Okay. The, the relief in this instance, the applicant has basically posited uh, sort of two sections of relief, you see one where they've, due to the conditions that presently exist at the site, which make it difficult to do additional changes with regard to reconfiguring of your travel ways, where you put your rain gardens, where you put your striping, pulling those things back. The second is the C two variance, they've basically said that, you know, though we are asking for more signs. In terms of total square footage, the signs are smaller, and we're actually conforming with the total square footage, we will address those. Um, that, in, in their way of thinking, uh, that presents a different or alternative design plan, obviously, we have we're gonna have so many signs, so many areas, they provided something different that they say is unique to their property because it's gonna work better with your property, um, but that will also have a benefit to surrounding properties, not just themselves. So that, my turn, that you're not going to have visual pollution of these, of these larger signs in all the areas. Again, you have to satisfy the criteria that we discussed in the beginning, and find if there's no substantial detriment um, to those zoning ordinances and or regulations. I would ask if there are any additional conditions that the board members think of, when we put those in. Uh, we ask for a motion in the second, a yes vote is a positive vote, you vote in favor of this application. I don't do that to, to tell you how to vote, just so that you know how we're planning. Uh, motion.
I'll make motion to approve the application.
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mayall?
Yes.
Mayall?
Yes.
Mr. Nick?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. Gill.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Motion's approved.
Very happy to get open. Oh. We have to finish the, the items on the schedule.
I stood, I put it in there, so that's.
Excellent. So, the other, the other administrative item that we had, just further discussion of the, the renovation.
Thank you.
You have no idea how many times I can do that.
Uh, no, not right now, is that, I don't know, is anybody? We're ready to discuss the process, and sort of how to move forward on that. I'm not, I don't, I don't, you all are. Sean, anything you want to discuss on the, I know we talked, yeah. But I think maybe we need to have a discussion, uh, before we sort of bring all that forward.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we're stuck. It's hard, I'm concerned. Yeah, like that's not a tenable path. We can have that depression, I don't know, yeah, I don't know what the new plans sets out, how you want to tackle that.
Well.
Am I, I mean, that's my opinion.
Good question.
Yeah, do we need to be in executive session, or?
Yeah, what's there?
Yeah, I mean, we could, we.
We, we can't, this is a topic for executive session.
Why don't we, why don't we do that?
All right.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, have a good night.
We're in the Open Public Meetings Act of certain instances where the board may go into closed executive session, which will split the public to discuss matters in this instance concerning, we're assuming contract negotiations and the desire to getting attorney, attorney counsel with regard to certain matters, those are specific matters in which we can exclude the public from those discussions. How long do we believe that the closed session will be?
Uh, I think, obviously, provide for about thirty minutes.
About thirty minutes, will we take any further action in thirty minutes?
Thirty.
Thirty, I'm sure.
Here, here, thirty, all right. Thirty, okay. Till nine thirty, then.
Do we anticipate, till one thirty, do we anticipate taking any further action of the, to adjourn the meeting at that time?
No, there are no other matters to bring, uh, or that would require public comment, so we can go into executive session.
We, just before we go into executive session, we can now open to public comment on any matter.
On any matter, yeah.
Any further public comment on any matter? There being none, and I'm gonna ask for a motion second on the executive session.
Second. I'll make the motion, go to the second session. Second. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go into closed session, folks, for half hour, we always need it, we're gonna do afterwards, and just do a general meeting. People will take off.
Lovely seeing you all.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Goodness.